You know, when you, when you drive on the roads in Pearland or Inver and Texas, or the United States, we want you to be very careful of the people on motorcycles. They have limited control sometimes of the dangerous conditions, and they are definitely disadvantaged when you're driving a local tank vehicle, even though it's a smaller car, not an SUV, but it can be quite dangerous and harmful to a driver that rides on a motorcycle. So tonight, we have a proclamation, the Office of the Mayor of City of Pearland, whereas today's society is filled with finding more civilized and citizens of civilized danger involved in motorcycling on the roads of our country that are much more likely to be injured or killed in a crash than other vehicle drivers. Whereas a comprehensive approach to motorcycle safety has helped inform riders, motorists alike, on motorcycle safety issues to reduce motorcycle-related injuries, and most of all fatalities. Whereas it is a responsibility of all vehicle drivers to be aware of motorcycles regarding them with the same respect as any other vehicle traveling the highways of this nation. Whereas the Texas Motorcycle Rights Association is urging our communities to be aware of the inherent dangers involved in operating a motorcycle and give the operator the respect for whom he is the service. Now therefore, I commend by the fire vested in me, the Mayor of the City of Pearland, Texas, to hereby proclaim the month of May, 2017, as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month in Pearland. And I ask all citizens close near and far to join with me and be aware of the surroundings as they operate a motor vehicle, whether it be a motorcycle or any other vehicle, to ensure the safety for themselves and for others. And the great deal of pleasure I gave you some of my hand in the seal of office this 27th day of, 22nd day, I think we actually, it looks better, 22nd day of May, 2017, and signed it with Mayor Tom Reed. And I'd like to present this to you and actually make a few comments before we take a photograph. Oh, he's ready. Don't piss the photo off. I should make a few comments. Oh, I asked my councilmember to come down because I wasn't aware of his talent and his, his skills at the election day, at the close of this, of election day, and we were tearing down the tent and putting weight stuff and loading everything up, and it was all clean and ready to go. And I looked over to go get my suburban, he would open up his motorcycle and go home. Easy rider car. But I'd like to see like a few comments and then let him do that afterwards.
Well, I think it's important for, if you're a rider too, at all times, to wear a helmet. I know the positive gets in Houston in the summertime, sometimes you don't want to do that, but hey, as a safety tip, that's probably the most important thing. And for those of you that don't ride, please keep your eyes open for us because we're a lot smaller, a lot more vulnerable than you are. So just keep your eyes open and make sure that we're not there when you can't lane.
One of the advantages he has is if he gets in an accident, he needs a bigger help, he has to be an attorney. Would you finish up soon?
Sure.
Thanks to the City of Pearland for presenting us this proclamation. And I'd like to add to his comments to please refrain from using knees while you're driving. You see so much more than you do from a motorcycle, the people on their phones, that you wouldn't believe it from a motorcycle. That's all I have to add, and if we could maybe get the rest of the back.
I'd like the rest of them to come down and have a good, the rest of them look at your booth. And I'd also have a group shot of you and the proclamation and our good council member who we had up there. Come on back in behind here, back behind, get away from the whole unit.
Want y'all do this? Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Okay, everyone, if you can just, if you can make sure you can see me, and this won't be painful at all.
Well, I don't make it turn sideways.
All right, shots here, please. One, two. Certainly, just go inch that, so you won't, so there you go, one more time here. All right, one, two, and again, one, two. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you so much, thank all of you for being here. And be careful when we drive. Make it up for sure.
Thanks, man, appreciate it.
Thank you. We're going to get a group shot for you guys. You know, well-run city is sometimes hard to find when you look at cleanliness and the organization and the community, and it's well-run, then you've got to, you know runoff can have a good footwork department. Because we're a good example of that in Pearland. I think we have a city that is very proud of our cleanliness, our recognition of making something more attractive than it probably could be if we hadn't done it, and the careful care that we have had from our Public Works Department in all areas that they are involved in, and we'll cover some of that in this proclamation, which is a proclamation, the Office of the Mayor of City of Pearland, whereas the nation's Public Works Department provides essential community services for infrastructure and municipal service needs that are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives and events. And whereas the support of our Public Works Department is vital for our public work system, they include water and wastewater, facilities, streets and sidewalks, drainage systems, and maintenance of our public buildings and our facilities. And whereas the health and safety and welfare of our citizens and of our community depends greatly on the quality and effectiveness of Public Works facilities, as well as their planning, design, construction by our Public Work officials and our workers. Whereas amended women of our Public Works Department ought to be commended for providing outstanding service 24/7, that's 24/7, to the citizens of Pearland with 124 Public Work team members operating within the 16th City Division of Centers. Now therefore, I commend by the fire vested in me, the Mayor of Pearland, City of Pearland, Texas, to hereby proclaim the week of 20, May 21st through 27th, 2017, as National Public Works Week in Pearland. And I ask all my citizens and community organizations to join with me, recognizing the outstanding service provided by the men and women of our public, of our Pearland and National Public Works Departments and the contribution they make to the vital service they perform for the communities. Public Works connects all of us. And this is given in my hand in seals, the Office of the Mayor, this 22nd day of May, 2017, and I would sign it with the great deal of pleasure of Mayor Tom Reed, and I'd like to present this to Andrea and ask you to.
All right, thank you very much, Council. Really appreciate allowing us to be recognized. I just ask for the employees that are here to please stand up and be recognized. If you're in Public Works, then stand up, please. Thank you. Well, you said it very well. The theme for this year is Public Works connects all of us, so water, wastewater, fleet keeps emergency vehicles rolling, we have care of our right of ways, we have care of our streets, drainage, everybody here is representing, they're different divisions, traffic operators, so we really appreciate the opportunity to let you in.
I tell you, the City Council are very proud of what you have accomplished in this department. You guys have done a superb job. My hat is off to you, I don't wear hats, but my head is off to you if I wore one, and my wig if I wore one. And thank you for the good work you always do. It is recognized and is greatly appreciated by all of us. And if you have no further comments, I think we're going to have all of you stand together in a few minutes.
Yes.
And then line up, get everyone's picture in this in public works.
That's right. We'll be going outside for a picture with our equipment outside, you know, be on the website after that.
Okay, super.
Right, thank you very much. Thank you.
Our council meeting was started seven, at 6:30.
Yeah, but is it going to be at a different cost? I think I'm losing my mind. If it's cost option, then that's great. If it's not a cost option...
Okay.
These are all for, all for number four?
Yeah, but is it going to be at a different cost? I think I'm losing my mind. If it's cost option, then that's great. If it's not a cost option...
Okay. These are all for, all for number four?
Yeah, but is it going to be at a different cost? I think I'm losing my mind. If it's cost option, then that's great. If it's not a cost option...
Okay. for Monday, May the 22nd, year 2017. Your police rides will have an invocation by Councilmember Tony Carbone, and our police chief, Chris Doyle, will, Chris, Johnny Spears will be leading us. We just changed police chiefs from Chris Doyle to Johnny Spears, and so I have a memory lapse there. But our new police chief, Johnny Spears, will lead us in the Pledge of Legions.
Thank you, Mayor. If y'all would bow with me. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you so much for another beautiful day. Thank you for all the blessings and liberties we take for granted each and every day. Help us to, to have the wisdom and guidance to make the right decisions tonight, be with those that are serving us, both in the city, state, nation, around the world, to protect our freedoms and liberties, and be with everybody as we go home tonight. It's your name we pray, amen.
Let the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
I want to express our appreciation for you being here tonight. We are delighted to have our citizens here and participate in our policy process, and we've had a couple of interesting proclamations. One was for motorcycle safety. So if you are riding, not on a motorcycle but a vehicle behind one or close to one, keep an eye out for them. And the other was, we were, we recognize the fine men and women who are members of our Public Works Department and the quality, great, fine, quality job they have done in our community throughout the years to make Pearland a safer, more attractive community. Moving in our agenda, to item number three, and I'm using the same agenda that you have. Roll call, our council members are here in place, and if this is one of your first visits, we do have a fresh face on our council. Councilmember Little here, stick your hand up, and he is our newest, he just got re-elected this past election cycle, and we're delighted to have him. And we're now moving into citizen comments. We do have one gentleman, I don't think he is here yet, Krishna, not Krishna, I don't think he's here, we'll catch him when he does come in. With that information in abeyance, let us then move to recognize there are a couple of individuals in our audience who are up for reelection, and I'd like to ask, starting with the gentleman sitting on the back row back there.
What are y'all on, position number seven?
And your mayor is up for reelection again this year, and I would appreciate your vote as well, position of mayor. Moving then to item number five on our agenda, which is our consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda, which consists of items A through M? Hearing done, I'll ask Councilmember Carbone if he would present this for our consideration.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration of possible action, approval of consent agenda items A through M, so moved.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Are there any questions or comments further on this particular item of consent agendas? Hearing done, we do have motion, second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Consent agenda items A through M passed with a 6-0 vote.
Okay. That information in the record, let's move then to our item four on our collective agenda, which is council new business. Moving to item, new business item number one, Councilmember Reed, would you present this for our, for our consideration tonight?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration of possible action, resolution number R2017-111, so moved.
Second.
Motion second, we're in discussion. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city is in need from time to time for bond council services. When we go for debt financing, it's very specialized and complicated legal work, has lots of implications for tax law and so forth, so all the proper filings must be made. We thought it was a good business practice to, in reviewing, that make sure that we had a current agreement with the firms doing this. We did go out and ask for professional proposals, scored those, reviewed that, and are recommending tonight that we go with Andrews-Curth for this work. They are the incumbent firm and have done an admirable job for us on a number of issues over the years. And this is a seven-year contract, and this kind of work does, you know, generate certain institutional knowledge, which is valuable to have, but it is, you know, cancelable by the city or, or the firm if we don't, you know, want to continue at any point, but at least this locks in the services and the fees for, for this time period.
Does the council have any question or comment? Councilmember Reed?
Yeah, I, I do. I'm interested in kind of seeing, well, first and foremost, I don't like us entering into a seven-year deal with a law firm. I mean, you know, a law firm usually just kind of does the work as, as work comes. I don't like being in any contract with, with a law firm. I mean, we can be in, in an engagement agreement where, you know, they do work as needed and, you know, we submit to them work, but an actual contract, I mean, that's, partners come and go, associates come and go, you know, I'd just rather, if we're going to choose them, then we choose them to work with until we decide, or some council after us decides that another firm, you know, may be, you know, better to work with, or, you know, something, something else changes. But entering into, especially a seven-year deal, I mean, I, I'm, my vote for this would be no, or is no.
Okay.
Also, well, that's it for now.
Okay, Colonel Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess in looking at the agenda right up, you know, I look at a proposed agreement from Andrews-Curth. I guess the first question is, is there a representative here? I don't know if you want to come down to defend yourself. And maybe between yourself and our legal counsel, is this, you know, is this a seven-year contract? Is this just an agreement or proposed agreement to provide the services for, for the bond financing, or can you expound on that a little bit?
Yes, I'm Tanya Fisher with Andrews-Curth. I've worked on the city deals for about 13, 14 years, along with my partner, Rick Witty, who has probably been working with you guys since the 90s, and you know him very well. I'm sorry, he had a conflict tonight and couldn't be here. It is, the city asked and requested a seven-year contract. If you, the terms of it are, you can cancel it at 30 days' notice at any time. And what this gives you, it benefits you all probably more than it does us in a sense, because it locks in these fees for seven years. So you guys are set for seven years. If you choose not to work with us, 30 days' notice, that you can cancel. And one of the things with bond council that's so important, especially with the city whose debt is very complex, is that having done this since the 90s, we have all the institutional knowledge of how all your deals have been structured, what you've refunded, what your issues have been, and so, you know, we provide more than just services for that deal. We've been doing it for a long time and have the history.
All right, thank you. I guess my opinion is, as long as we can get out within 30 days, there's no penalty. If you're willing to lock your rate in for seven years with me, I'd be happy with it, because I assume rates are going to go up even just with inflation, so I'm, I'm fine with it. They've, as much as I don't like attorneys, they've done a good job for us through the, the Texas Water Development Board bond issue and everything else, so as much as I like to bash on Rick, since he's not here, I think they've done a fine service, and with a 30-day out, I don't see the downside.
Okay. Councilmember Reed, did you find the sections you were going to look for?
No, I, I'd have to ask Darren, and he's, he's not here. I mean, unless Lawrence knows, or unless she wants to, I don't, I want to see what the rate is.
There's a sheet that has a, it's a percentage of the deals.
I think it's highlighted yellow.
Six of eight, I believe, on the packet.
Did you find it yet?
Maybe if you could outline how your fees are billed, because it's not typically like an hourly rate, it's as a percentage of par, so if you could expound on that.
Right. Bond council services are never done an hour late, that's pretty standard, and if you look on the paragraph on page three, it kind of outlines the way it goes. What we did, and if you look at our, our old contract, which I don't have with me, but we, especially our minimum fee for smaller deals, we've significantly cut that to...
Is this just an agreement or proposed agreement to provide the services for the bond financing? Or can you expound on that a little bit?
Yes, I'm Tanya Fisher with Andrews-Curth. I've worked on the city deals for about thirteen, fourteen years, along with my partner, Rick Witty, who has probably been working with you guys since the nineties, and you know him very well. I'm sorry, he had a conflict tonight and couldn't be here. It is, the city asked and requested a seven-year contract. The terms of it are, you can cancel it at thirty days' notice at any time. And what this gives you, it benefits you all probably more than it does us in a sense, because it locks in these fees for seven years. So you guys are set for seven years. If you choose not to work with us, thirty days' notice that you can cancel. And one of the things with bond council that's so important, especially with the city whose debt is very complex, is that having done this since the nineties, we have all the institutional knowledge of how all your deals have been structured, what you've refunded, what your issues have been, and so, you know, we provide more than just services for that deal. We've been doing it for a long time and have the history.
All right, thank you. I guess my opinion is, as long as we can get out within thirty days, there's no penalty. If you're willing to lock your rate in for seven years with me, I'd be happy with it, because I assume rates are going to go up even just with inflation. So I'm fine with it, they've, as much as I don't like attorneys, they've done a good job for us through the Texas Water Development Board bond issue and everything else. So as much as I like to bash on Rick, since he's not here, I think they've done a fine service, and with a thirty-day out, I don't see the downside.
Okay. Councilmember Reed, did you find the sections you were going to look for?
No, I'd have to ask Darren, and he's not here. I mean, unless Lawrence knows, or unless she wants to, I don't know, I want to see what the rate is.
Okay.
There's a sheet that has, it's a percentage of the deals.
I think it's highlighted yellow.
Six of eight, I believe, on the packet.
Did you find it yet?
Maybe if you could outline how your fees are billed, because it's not typically like an hourly rate, it's as a percentage of par, so if you could expound on that.
Right. Bond council services are never done an hour late, that's pretty standard. And if you look on the paragraph on page three, it kind of outlines the way it goes. What we did, and if you look at our old contract, which I don't have with me, but we, especially our minimum fee for smaller deals, we've significantly cut that to, I think it's seventy-five, seventy-five hundred dollars for your basic deal, and then like a ten thousand dollars for a revenue deal, which if you compare it to most other contracts, that is very low. And then, once you get to the bigger deals, then those are just going to be done as a percentage of the deal. So if you issue, and John, you're probably the math guy, if you do a twenty million-dollar deal, it will just be based on like ninety-five cents per bond, or seventy-five cents per bond, if it's a GO deal. And that's pretty much standard, the way bond council is done.
Thank you.
And let me just kind of also follow up on that, if it's okay. We don't charge when you guys call us for advice, or for any information, or help structuring deals. None of that is extra. I mean, if you call our tax lawyers at any time during the year to ask, you know, basic questions, we're here for you guys all throughout the year, to help in any way you need, not just when you have a deal. And we don't start the clock when you call us. So, I mean, we're really on call for you all year, for these basic services.
Any contractor that we might have that is non-performing, we can always terminate. And unless, with the proper legal advice, we could probably terminate their contract.
If you look in the second to last paragraph, Mayor, it says specifically, you may terminate by the city with thirty days' written notice.
About number eight?
Way on the second, page four.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, so for any reason, you just get mad at us. You can, you can talk.
Okay. Any other question or comment, Councilman?
I just have one. One, I want to tell staff, appreciate y'all going out to bid on this. I think we've had a history of where we have great consultants that are incumbent, and we think they're doing a good job, but it's good to get the confirmation, go out, get some numbers. You know, I'm looking at the rate, you know, for, at ninety-five cents for every thousand, seventy-five cents for every thousand for the aggregate proceeds, the obligation. I mean, I don't know as much about that, but just doing some quick math, as far as how much work I think would be associated with a twenty million dollar bond issuance, I think the fee is fairly reasonable. Given that we have exclusive right to terminate with thirty-day notice, I think I'm comfortable with the contract. Thank you.
I think over the years, we've had, we have greatly benefited having a bond council service agreements with Andrew Curth, and have helped us, understanding some methods and approaches during some down years in the economy. So it, I think they pretty well tested and proved they're capable of doing that. And I see no problem with a seven-year contract with this time. Any other comment or question, Council? Hearing done, we do have a motion, second on the floor, and Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Resolution twenty seventeen dash one 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 was approved with five to one.
Moving to new business item number two, Councilmember Moore, would you place this on the table for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration of possible action, resolution number R two zero one seven dash one zero nine, so moved.
We have a motion and a second, we're in discussion. Staff report.
Thank you, sir. Likewise, similar vein, we went out and tested for professional services, for financial advisory work. BOK Financial has been our incumbent firm. They were not the lowest price, but we do recommend retaining them, given their track record, the principals involved, their knowledge of the city. Again, this is something that we call upon for different scenarios, a pretty regular basis, you know, I've been involved in some of that, where we need to test out different options and so forth for debt issuances, future interest rates, what have you, defecences. So some we use on a regular basis, and they too are paid on a percentage of each deal when we do go out and issue debt for financing. And likewise, this is set up to be the seven years, but cancelable if, you know, performance or anything else enters into it, and we decide we want to change that.
Council, any question or comment on this item? Councilmember Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess my last comment, no offense, Councilman Little, on the bash against attorneys. But, John, I mean, I know you're not the low bidder. I'd like to echo what Clay said, I mean, you've fielded my calls and my questions, I appreciate the service. The only concerning part, which I did see, and I don't know if you want to come up to address this, is as much as you're supposed to be a fiduciary, there's an inherent conflict when you get paid on a per-deal basis in terms of like a refinancing. And I know it's outlined on compensation-based conflicts, can you just explain that to us in plain English, and kind of how y'all handle it within the firm?
Sure. Well, internally, and then also what we express to the city staff, and we do recommend refunding, is that we're not going to refunding unless it benefits the city, and we look at it on a per-deal basis and a per-maturity basis. So if we have a refunding out there that generates two percent PV savings, we're not going to bring it to you. It's got to generate over three percent PV savings, and we've been fortunate the last couple of years, where we've been seeing more than like five to ten percent PV savings, but historically it's three percent. We also look at the negative arbitrage, what's the cost of doing the refunding now as opposed to waiting till the call date? And we have a model that we put in place, and it's, the call dates within two years, fifty percent negative arbitrage, past two years, it's got to be thirty-five percent negative arbitrage, less than thirty-five percent negative arbitrage. So we have a model in place in-house that, you know, to keep our standard, and we've communicated that with the city, and we will not bring a deal to the city unless it benefits you, those models.
All right. And, again, this is a seven-year, do we have the same thirty-day out?
Yes, sir, you sure do.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Reed?
I guess my question is for Clay, how much of a difference, a price difference between the low bidder, in this instance, it's just six thousand bucks, but, you know, between the low bidder and a, an incumbent, do we actually give in order to really decide, you know what, we should go with this low bidder? So like in this case, like I said, six thousand, is it, if it was twelve thousand difference, then we go with the low bidder, fifty thousand difference, we go with the low bidder? I mean, only because, you know, I feel like, from an incumbent standpoint, even still, I know you can get out in thirty days, that's well and good, but, you know, when the next council sits down and sees this, they see that we're in a seven-year deal with whomever. And so it makes them think, well, that's who we got to stick with, you see what I'm saying? And so, I mean, I don't know, unless they're being told, hey, if you guys ever want to get out of this deal, you know, you can just give a thirty-day written notice. We're deciding on it today, yes, but, you know, there's so many deals that the city is in, that, you know, you could only find out about if you ask, and a lot of questions aren't necessarily asked all the time. So what gap is that, to where we stop, you know, always going with the same incumbent or same people? No knock on you, I mean, but...
Good, fair question, I think sort of gets at, you know, when does, you know, momentum and familiarity, you know, when does a price overcome that? I guess I'd look at it personally as a percentage of, I mean, if you're getting outside, you know, ten, twenty percent, then, you know, you got to look and say, hey, is it worth taking a quote-unquote "chance" for switching horses and doing that? And the other part of your question, I think, you know, the good thing is that these professionals come up before us for every deal, and yes, they've worked on that particular one, but, you know, there'd be plenty of opportunity for any, you know, council member, or anybody to say, hey, when was the last time we looked at this, or did we get the best service possible on each one of those, and then for the next one, you know, let's look and, you know, go out again. So I think there's sort of, because of that, it's not like with the auditors, where you see them, you know, once a year kind of thing. We see them more often typically, and we're interacting with them, so I think we'd have more chances to, you know, say, hey, you know, it's getting, and their percentages are, you know, relatively tight, as you said, and so I don't think it crosses that threshold where we need to, I would recommend suggesting moving over to another firm.
I think one of the advantages we have in this particular case, we at least have track record of several years of service in this particular person, and the new one, we could probably, as quality enabled as well, but at least we have track work, we know the known quantity.
You know, yeah. And another thing to point out on this, I mean, when I looked at the bids, the low bidder, in my opinion, threw three numbers out there. I mean, when you have the exact same number, and it's a round number, I begin to question how much work was actually put into the preparation, especially when you look at every other bid, and none of them are round numbers, and none of them take those three items and put the same price on. So to me, that has to be taken into account, along with some other things that were extra and are included in the next low bid. So to me, it's more than just a percent, too, it's also that feel of, did they do their homework, do they know what we're actually looking at? Unfortunately, I have set up here an award of the bid, and within a very short period of time, we had to come back and redo that, because the people didn't, you know, do what they said they did. And I'll be honest, when I see three numbers that nobody else puts identical, it causes questions for me.
Did a question or comment?
Well, as far as being able to get out of the contract, I think if the provider's not providing good service to the city, obviously, they look at the contract to see what our escape clause is, so I'm not real concerned with being locked in at seven years, when you can easily get out with a thirty-day notice. As far as the price differential of six thousand dollars, I trust our people that have already worked with this group to feel comfortable with them.
Any other question or comment at this point? Hearing done, we have motion, second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Resolution twenty seventeen one oh nine was approved five to one.
Information in the record, let's move to item number three on our new business agenda section. Councilmember Carbone, would you, I mean, did you have to comment on the other independent? Okay. Councilmember Ordno, would you present this for our consideration?
Consideration of possible action, resolution number R twenty seventeen dash ninety-two, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we're in discussion. Would you staff report?
Thank you, sir. This is something that was presented to the council at the last meeting, and request for more information. We tried to explain some of the background, the substance of the material hasn't changed, but did provide some information about the out clauses and the renewal terms and so forth for this wind insurance. Georgiana Arbaras here, our risk manager, answer any questions, but, you know, we, this is a reduction from our current fees, first and foremost, for the coverage, and it's obviously weighted during the calendar year for the storm season, but after that, we could get out, and what has been offered is a renewal for next year, if we choose to take that. And so we have the price known for that, and did make the commitment that we'll revisit and report on this, you know, with a recommendation about whether we should go out and test it again next year, so we don't just automatically, which I think is sort of the gist of, you know, how these things get set up, is that they're hoping slash assuming that they'll just ride without testing it, so that's maybe why that's built up that way, so.
Before we move into the full discussion, we do have some citizens that wish to speak on this item, and...
No, no, the next one. That's the next one.
That's no four.
Next one.
Got to enroll one here. Any further comments, Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, there was discussion last meeting on this, so I read through the agenda and all the write-up, I never got a clear answer, so, so there's two options. The cheaper option is a two-year agreement, that there's no penalty for us to cancel after one year.
After the, yes, sir, after the season is through, so you're right.
And legal's fine with that?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Any other question or comment, Council? We do have motion, second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Resolution twenty seventeen dash ninety-two was approved six to zero.
Moving to item number four on our new business agenda, Councilmember Little, would you present this for our consideration?
Consideration of possible action, resolution number R twenty seventeen dash one zero one.
We haven't finished, we have to finish. Move?
Second.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second, we're in discussion, and the citizens wish to speak, fell behind the right number here, finally. We do have some citizens that like to speak, if you'll please come to the podium, give us your name and address, and kind of one at a time, since I'll call you one at a time, several that wish to speak. Would you kind of confine your comments to a reasonable amount of time, around three minutes, something like that, for, so, starting with Raquel. Thank you for being here, appreciate you, and thank...
Yes, thank you for your service today, sir, and I'm also here today to ask Honorable Mayor and Honorable Councilmembers to table this vote for approval for...
Did you, did she give her?
We need your name and address for the record.
Oh, I apologize. I thought she was...
It's a legal requirement that we have your name and address for the purpose of the court. I may know you, but the recorder didn't...
Oh, okay, I apologize. My name is Raquel Boujorn, and my address is eighty-nine fifty-one Ruthby Street.
Okay. All right, thank you, thank you very much.
Okay. Yes, I'm here today to ask Honorable Mayor and Honorable Councilmembers to table this vote for approval for Lindwood East Orange and Old Alvin Reconstruction Project. I'm a Hispanic female general contractor, and frankly, I am very appalled at the formal recommendation and comments regarding my company, made by Arc Engineering. The way my firm was rejected is one-hundred percent fallacious. Today is about being a voice for women of all kinds, and a voice for those who are not treated fairly. I am asking for fairness today, which is impartial and just treatment or behavior without favoritism or discrimination. The City of Pearland is not only failing me, should they vote yes to this decision today, but they're failing their citizens. We could actually save the city five hundred thousand dollars, and I'm actually really grateful that somebody had questioned, when is the right time to take a chance on a company, instead of always going with the incumbent? And my answer to that is today, because we could save the city five hundred thousand dollars, and this is a bonded project, and we would not be able to bond this project unless we had been able to perform at this capacity. Furthermore, I just want to read some excerpts from my letter, which I provided to you, which I feel is very important in my experience through this whole bidding process. This is the first time I've actually bid a project for the City of Pearland. I've worked in other municipalities, and I'm actually currently, my largest client is the University of Houston, which many of you are alumni. On May twelfth, twenty seventeen, I had a meeting with the City of Pearland, which was reminiscent of the nineteen-sixties. As I walked confidently into the room to have this meeting with the thought, maybe Pearland was giving me a chance, there was no agenda prepared, nor a sign-in sheet provided, which implied to me that we were not being taken seriously, and I was wearing the scarlet letter. There were giggles in the room, as it was explained that my references were not good enough, and at this point in time, only two of eight of my references were actually reached out to verify my ability. The funny thing about this is my ability was actually questioned. I was asked who was going to run my project, as if me being a young woman, I was not capable. And actually, I'm very experienced in this field, my company was established in two thousand nine. And as you saw earlier, it's a team of people that make a company qualified, just like you gentlemen have so many team members for Public Works. My company is made up of many, many, many people who cumulatively have over a hundred years' experience in this type of project. You know, similar to Arc Engineering, which has only been established since two thousand eleven, it was not the amount of years that the company was in business that was determined that they were good enough to work on this project. enough to work on this project, but it was their team. And I feel like they failed the city and they failed my team. They're not just disqualifying my company, they're disqualifying my entire team. The recommendation is inaccurate and false, as they belittled my additional experience with street improvements. And if the proper due diligence was performed, it would have been reflected in the recommendation, which I want this to be stated for the record, is not accurate. You know, I would like for this to be discredited, and I would like for the proper due diligence to be performed. And I do think today is about taking a chance and about making a change and about, you know, giving an opportunity to someone like me. I know many times we feel more comfortable working with people that we know, but who's to say that we're not as qualified or better than what you already know? So again, thank you for your time. I really appreciate it. And that's all that I have to say.
I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
And Arturo, I believe is there here. Arturo, please. Thank you for being here tonight.
My name is Arturo Fernandez. I live in 8951 Montclair Hill Lane, Rush Aaron. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Councilmembers, for your time, for hearing us today, our testimonies. I work for A-Status Construction. I have 13 years' experience in the industry. And I don't have anything
Could you move the microphone a little closer to you, perhaps?
I don't have any, anything to say but wonderful things about the company. You may say I work for it. Yeah, I really like and enjoy working for it. I was also, oh, I, as a recent resident of Pearland, I used to live in Pearland Parkway, in the apartments next to the Starbucks. I love Pearland, by the way. I was also disappointed at the experience on the last meeting. It was really disappointing. I have a nine-year-old daughter that I always tell her, hey, you can be whatever you want to be. And that day, I felt like I was lying to her. Because if she wants to be a female contractor or a female CEO of a construction company, I feel like a liar, because it wasn't taken like that. I implore the City Council to find a way to make it right. Thank you for your time, and thanks again.
I appreciate your comments. Thank you very much. Mr. Diego, thank you for being here tonight.
My name is Diego. I live in 52 Pinot, Pasadena, Texas. Good evening, Mayor Reed, Councilmembers, in beautiful residence of City of Pearland. My name is Jose Diego Monroy. I'm a partner at ASA Dally. ASA Dally is a private company providing engineering and construction management services in the Houston area and other cities and counties. I have over 18 years of experience in civil engineering, construction administration management, and flood protection mitigation and drainage in the states of California, Arizona, and Texas. I hold a degree in civil engineering from California State University of Long Beach. I have taken graduate courses in construction management at the University of Houston. In 2004, after completing my studies in California, my wife and I moved to Pasadena, Texas, to raise our family, to be close to her family, to living in Pasadena. Throughout the years, I had the honor and privilege to work in great projects, in great engineering and construction projects in three states, once again, in California, Arizona, and Texas. I had the pleasure in doing projects here in the City of Pearland. I'm currently working on the U of H Clear Lake, Pearland campus expansion along Pearland Parkway. I am here, Mayor, and Councilmembers, to request an extension of time for consideration of impossible action of resolution 101, which awards the construction contract for the Linwood Orange Street Reconstruction Project to the second lowest bidder and not to the lower bidder, A-Status Construction. I respectfully disagree to City's consultants' recommendations of disqualifying A-Status Construction to execute this project. In my opinion, and based on previous communications with the City's staff and City consultant, their recommendations appear to be inaccurate and incomplete. I feel that Mrs. Raquel, with A-Status Construction, deserves a further qualification evaluation review for this project. She has selected a great and experienced team with more than 100 years of combined experience to execute this project. Disqualifying A-Status Construction, they're also disqualifying the great team that she selected for this project. I only here asking you to please to reschedule your decision and to the fair evaluation for the qualification that Raquel and her company is performed by the City's staff and consultant. Thank you very much. God bless the City of Pearland, and good evening.
Good. I appreciate those comments. Thank you. Thank you very much. Felipe? There he is. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm here today to provide some important facts for your consideration in regards to A-Status Construction and this process. If Arc Engineering would have performed a proper due diligence, they would have learned, even from the University of Houston, that we completed over $500,000 worth of street improvements within a 60-day period, which is comparable to the progressive amount necessary for this project. We not only performed well, but on a prestigious campus with college students in session. They would have also learned that we are a multi-state contractor for Waffle House. A-Status Construction actually helped build the one down the road last year. We also recently completed a road improvement project for the Cedar Park. And that was also a quick-term project unlike this one. We're also currently performing an additional $560,000 underground utility and concrete parking lot project for the University of Houston Central Campus, which is another 60-day completion project. We have 100% return on repeat business, which is not like many of our competitors. Furthermore, Arc Engineering assigned Mr. Doug Bradford, a three-year experience project engineer, to handle due diligence for the City of Pearland on a $7 million budgeted project. On May the 4th, 2017, Ms. Bujorn received a call from one of the two references that Doug Bradford reached out to, and it was implied by the reference that Mr. Bradford had a negative image of our firm. On May 9, 2017, Ms. Bujorn spoke with Mr. Skipper Jones, and it was revealed, with witnesses hearing the conversation, that there was a concern with A-Status Construction because we have not performed work in Pearland. On May the 12th, city representatives conducted a meeting with A-Status Construction. It was explained that the sole purpose of the issue was references. At this point in time, only two references were contacted. On May the 16th, two additional references were contacted, and, I'm sorry, two additional references contacted A-Status Construction to inform us that Arc Engineering was still reaching out to references, even though they had already officially made a formal recommendation to the city. Thank you so much for your time and for listening to us.
Good. I appreciate those comments. Very good. Thank you. Elaine Garcia? Thank you for being here tonight.
I'd like to thank you, Honorable Mayor and Honorable Councilmembers. I understand service, and I really appreciate what you're doing for this city and for this neck of the woods, because I belong to it. My address is 8951 Ruthby as well. And I know that you can't tell, but I'm over half a century old. I know I can't believe it myself. But I have to say that with that time that I have is the experience of being a woman in business, dominantly performed by men. And with that, in these last more than half a century, I've had to endure quite a bit. You know, you have all heard about what we do and what we've had to endure in the, being degraded, being felt like we can't do the same things that men can do in math or in science, and in this case, in construction. You know, I've been through the humiliation, I've been through the intimidation, I've been through all of it. But one thing that really surprised me about this is that, at my age, yes, we expected that. But this is a society that has grown. This is a neighborhood of prestige. This is a city that has flourished. And the last thing that we expect out of a city like this is to be going back to the 1950s. And that's what we felt like in that room that day. We walked in, and there was nothing but smug remarks and smirks, condescending looks. And quite frankly, had it not been for your esteemed legal counsel here, it would have gotten out of hand. And I thank him for calming things down. We appreciate it. Because the way that that meeting was going is not the way things should be done in business ever. I'm surprised that a city so diversified would even have to resort to this type of treatment. I'm asking that the city go back and really take a look at this, because it was embarrassing to me, as a woman at my age, to be in the presence of men treating us that way. I was embarrassed. And I felt really bad about how we were treated. And only because we weren't given the chance. Two references were called, you've heard that, and that's the truth. And we know this because after we'd received the recommendation, we know that they called the rest of our references. And you know why we know that? Because our references love us. And they were concerned about how we were being treated. I really am asking for you to take a look as to why we were not chosen. And I understand, when you have a consulting firm that's more comfortable with another organization, they would more want to lean that way. But that wasn't what was right. We were the lowest bidder. We have a performance bond. We are capable. The references were there. So the only reason, and I think that's really our biggest issue, is that the letter that Arc Engineering turned in was about us not having good references. But really, what it should have said was that we are not comfortable with them because we don't know them and we don't want to work with someone we don't know. That's what it should have said. Instead, they bashed us. Now, that's what I find, that's what I find most disturbing about this whole issue. Be honest. Be truthful. Tell people how you really feel, so that we can really judge how it really is. Again, I ask you to please table this and to make this right. Thank you.
Good. I appreciate your comments. Thank you, ma'am. I let the record reflect that Raquel did send us, City Council and staff, a copy of the status that they wanted to share, and it has been received and is part of the record. This information in the record. Let's move to staff report on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the award tonight is for a major rehab for our existing roadway drainage utilities in Linwood and the East Orange area. This is a project that we identified a year and a half ago or so, and have advanced rather quickly to put in this position. Council's aware of the sequencing. This has actually been expanded a little bit to incorporate two elements, and will be coming back with Old Alvin Expansion as a separate project after this. I'll ask Mr. Pearson to go through sort of the background and what we've done to come to this conclusion and recommendation for you tonight here.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As Mr. Pearson stated, this is a large, well over $5 million construction contract to reconstruct the streets, as well as improve the drainage and replace the water lines in the Linwood area, as well as along Orange and Old Alvin. The project has significant traffic control. It's a complex project, lots of neighborhood interaction, as we're going to be right in a lot of folks' front yard. And it'll be very disruptive to traffic and the residents in that area. When we receive bids, we require bidders to submit their relevant experience. A-Status, the parent low bidder, when bids came in, submitted three projects as their relevant experience. And those three projects, when we called to check on those, basically, A-Status was not a construction company on those projects. ASA Dally, who is proposed to be construction management services on this project, provided similar-type services on those projects, construction management, as well as some civil design work. We did call nine references total initially, and we checked the additional experience that they provided. And I believe as they've discussed tonight, that there were new parking lots for U of H, a right-turn lane for Cedar Park. The parking lot project was approximately $550,000, and the turn lane was approximately $130,000. And then worked for Waffle House, as well as other parking lot maintenance projects. So that's what we could establish as the prior experience. When we looked at this compared to this particular project, the size, scope, complexity and difficulty, we couldn't move forward with making a recommendation for A-Status. Therefore, we wholeheartedly stay with our recommendation for S E R Construction. They've done very similar projects to this, and many projects of this size and larger. And some of those successfully here in the city typically ahead of schedule. So if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
Can you just touch on the timeframe schedule, once awarded, how long does it go on?
So once a project's awarded, it's usually a month or so before we sit down and have the pre-construction meeting. And once we issue the notice to proceed, it's about a 15-month schedule to substantial completion.
Councilmember, any question or comment on this point? Councilmember Reed?
Appreciate it, Councilmember Reed. So I want to go through a few things, because I think there was a lot of things said here. And I will tell you that if you were, as a council member who owns a civil engineering firm, who happens to be Hispanic, I hire female engineers. I have no cause or concern to believe that your gender or your ethnicity has anything to do with your performance. And I think if you'll notice, that we have three project managers in the room that work for the City of Pearland. All three of them are females, and all three of them are minorities. We don't judge people's ability in Pearland based on their ethnicity. We don't judge their ability based on their sex. That's not how we do business. We've never done business that way. But if y'all were presented as a low bidder, I would ask staff to throw it out, for various reasons. One, it's an imbalance bid. You come out low and are relatively competitive to the second bidder, but there's a lot of values in here that just don't make sense. It would report to me that maybe you're not familiar enough with doing this kind of work to be able to justify those values. Your mobilization cost at $8,000 for Linwood, I just don't know how that could be affordable for y'all. $8,000 for mobilization on any project. I can't get a development project to go out and mobilize for $8,000. Linear cost for water line at $15, 12-inch RCP at $15. I can't buy the pipe for $15 a linear foot, much less trench it, install it, bed it, backfill it, compact it. It's those values right there in and of themselves would have me question the bid and throw it out. I have no comments as to what it is y'all's ability to perform the work. I looked at your website. I've seen some of the projects you've done. I take credence to the fact that you have repeat business from Waffle House, who does a lot of work. I think that y'all probably do great work. But for this project, for the bid that we received, you're not there yet. That's not to say that you won't get there, and that's not to say that we won't give you another shot. But for what y'all have performed, or what y'all have told us you have experience doing, as somebody in your industry, you're not ready for a project as somebody in your industry, you're not ready for a project of this size. To select you would do you a disservice. This is an extraordinarily demanding project. The value you have for traffic control, I'm sorry, your mobilization was 3,800, your traffic control was $8,000. You can't hire flaggers for long enough to do that. And this is a 15-month-long project in school zones, with a firehouse, with neighborhoods that have only one way in and one way out, or two ways in and two ways out. Traffic control on this is going to be very difficult. And a little bit of the history of this project is, there are some neighbors that have been waiting for this for three decades. And we're very sensitive to make sure that what we do with this project is above board. To select somebody that we're experimenting with, that we have some questions on, would do them a disservice. You know, there's just, there's too many unknowns on this project to go with the lowest bidder as opposed to a qualified bidder. And I apologize if y'all felt like y'all were mistreated. I've known a few of those people that you mentioned for years. I've never, never once experienced that they were in any way discrediting somebody because of their race or their ethnicity. But I will tell you that they will discredit somebody because they don't feel like they're experienced enough. To do a parking lot project, regardless of the value, is not the same as doing a linear project. Most parking lot projects, you don't have to deal with traffic control. You don't have to stage it. You don't have to keep one lane open while you're doing the other lane. You know, most development projects, the pavement is relatively simplified. You can pour it in a day. For a left-turn lane, same thing. You can probably pour it in a day, and you can work off, you can work out of traffic where traffic control is not necessarily all that difficult. This is a different animal. And I don't think, based on what y'all have even told us, I wouldn't expect that you've got enough experience to be able to handle this in and of itself. You know, it's not to say you won't get there. I think that you may soon be able to get there. And for me, I would like to be able to see y'all bid on other projects, smaller projects that, or development-type projects, like fire stations, or parks, or something like that, and have the opportunity there. But for this project, I wholeheartedly agree with staff, from an experience perspective, you're just not prepared for this demanding a project. And for us to have awarded it to you would have been a disservice to you. I'm confident that you can't build a water line for $15 a linear foot. I'm confident of it.
Can I respond to your question?
It's not really a dialogue session, but let's let the other council members talk.
Any other council? What's your council member read?
I'm not sure who was in there, but it sounds like Lawrence, you were a part of the meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I feel more comfortable with maybe an update, not from you, like, right now, but maybe a memo, Thursday memo, or something like that, just kind of knowing what happened prior to us. And maybe doing a little bit more background investigation into the actual process, you or Darren, before we make this decision. I know I'm one of the lawyers that Councilmember Carbone doesn't really like a lot, but at the end of the day, you know, I'm just, I'm making what I think to be the best decision. Yeah, just, I think it'd be good for council to just make sure that that's, all our Ts are dotted, Is are dotted, Ts are crossed.
So with that being said, I'm moving to table it until our next meeting. Table this consideration and possible action until our next meeting.
Motion to table, is there any second? There is no second. Councilmember Moore?
So, I had a question on, I don't remember who it was, but somebody mentioned about not having a sign-in sheet at the meeting. Can you check and find out? Because prior to me coming on council, I remember a huge contract deal issue with, around a sign-in sheet. So if we're not doing the sign-in sheets, I would like us to start doing that.
And if you'd like me to address that, we didn't have a prepared sign-in sheet. We had a tablet that we were prepared to, I'm sorry, the city's consultant, Arc Engineers, had a tablet that they were prepared to pass around, and I believe it had titles at the top. But A-Status wanted, they brought a sign-in sheet that was more of a table, computer-generated, instead of a tablet to pass around.
Okay.
You know, I'll be honest, for me, the meeting and the other items, the low bid on this could have been my fictitious brother's contractor, and I would have voted against it. I would have voted for SEER for the simple reason, when I look at the difference in the two, and the fact that they did a project for us in the Regency Park that is very similar to this, and the reviews we got from that project were off the charts. That alone is why I'm supporting staff's recommendation, is I know what this company can do. We saw it firsthand in a neighborhood very similar to this one, and the projects had a lot in common. So, that does give me a comfort level that I feel for the residents is worth the difference. These residents, as it was mentioned before, have been waiting on this a long time. I don't want to see problems with it, and we do have a company with a reasonable bid that, I have history and I have faith, we won't have problems. So, that's my reason for voting in favor of this.
Well, after listening to the testimony and reading the supporting documents, I'm comfortable with staff's recommendation.
You know, I heard a slight indication of something other than professional ability to perform mentioned, and that's not exactly anything had to do with the decision-making process, I can assure you of that. We have, the state law gives any entity an opportunity and an authority to look at a, override a lower bid for justifiable reasons. And we're very careful about that, because we do an awful lot of work in the city, and there are a lot of jobs that we have to perform. And so we're not in the business to try to alienate any one contractor, regardless of nationality, religion, or country of origin, or any other reason behind it. It's still a business for us, because we have to do what we have to do with the money. And the council has been working with staff. Staff is very, very careful to make sure that, because we have so many bidders that come in, so many projects that we're working on, that you're going to run into situations such as this occasionally, and it's not deliberate, and we don't try to cherry-pick one particular contractor as a target of something. So, we're very, we're not in that kind of business, and we can't afford to be, and we don't intend to be. And so we try to do what we feel is best for the city, our council, and for the job that has to be done. And some of these, some jobs are a little more difficult and critical than other routine-type jobs as well, which I think, if you've been in this business a while, you know that. So, I think, I think we've tried to make the best decision we can, and that doesn't mean you can't come back and look for another job somewhere. So, don't burn your bridges as you go along through these processes of trying to bid for jobs around the country. So, does council have any other comment or question or comment?
I just like to follow up with one thing. Even though if you don't get this bid, I mean, please come back and bid on other jobs, maybe some work that's not quite as big, to get you started in the city, get us to know who you are, and move forward that way.
Yeah, I want to second that. I'd love for y'all to come back. I'd love for y'all to have an opportunity here, for a project that's more befitting your experience. I just don't think this project is it.
And Councilmember Carbone, I think you had a comment, and then Councilmember Reed.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to throw in my two cents. And to echo the comments about Regency Park, I mean, that's a subdivision that could have gone horribly wrong, and I didn't get one complaint call about the recommended contractor. So, again, like Councilwoman Ordno said, that alone puts me over the top, because these folks have been dealing with Linwood and Orange for a while now. And we can't, we, truthfully, I don't want any phone calls. I want it to go off, just like Regency Park, and, you know, I want them to show up and say, hey, it's done, it was great. And, you know, whether, I don't know if an attorney will call them allegations or not, I do like Councilman Reed's recommendation to get some sort of write-up. I mean, there were some things said that I would hope that don't go on in the city. If they are, I don't approve of it, I don't know anybody up here that would. I've got two 11-month-old girls at home, and I'm, you know, we're not going to stand for that, and we don't stand for that. So, whatever we need to do to look into that, I'd like to see something come back before us. But I do want to keep the project moving forward. The citizens need that repaired out there timely, and they had done it right.
Councilmember Reed?
So, Councilmember Carbone said exactly one of the things I was going to say. I still want the write-up. And meeting minutes, you know, everybody that was there in attendance, all staff that was there in attendance, and then the phone calls, an investigation is into the phone calls that were made on behalf of the city to their, to the references. Second thing is, I guess this is to Clay again, you know, it seems like $500,000 now. We've gone up from $6,000 to $500,000, $6,000 to $500,000. So, is that, well, this is just, I mean, it's not percentage-wise, we're not talking about, you know, no, no, $6,000 to $500,000, $500,000. So, if that's our, you know, my question earlier was, what's our range to where price beats out the incumbent? And so it seems like, well, you know, SCR could have been maybe even $1 million, and we still would have gone with them because they did Regency Park well. Again, these are just my comments. You know, obviously, I'm going to vote no, but it's going to pass anyway. So, I just wanted to make sure that that was known. So, we're, as a council, getting ready to vote to spend an additional half million dollars. And I'm not saying I don't want this project done, I want it done just as bad as the next person, and the folks over there know that. At the same time, you know, I want us to be, as Councilmember Carbone would say, fiscally responsible in the things that we do as a council. So, with that being said, I'm sure, unless Councilmember Ordno has something to say to retort it, I'm sure we're ready to.
Well, I believe the answer that was given was, it's a percentage. And the percentages on the two examples you gave are very similar.
If I can interject?
And I would say that it's more of, the statement is the lowest qualified bidder. And I think what we're seeing is that, our staff does not feel comfortable that the low bidder in here has qualified themselves to do the job, so we go to the next lowest qualified bidder. And I think, again, if we look through the bid tab, and you look at the discrepancies between some of the prices, it should call into question their experience, because most of the other bidders, particular mobilization, they're about the same, which leads us to believe, leads me to believe, as somebody who's in this industry, that it's, that they are aware of the cost to mobilize, and the other is not. And the problem when you have unqualified bids is that, when they, when the contractor doesn't realize, or begins to realize that they may have a mistake on one of their bids, they're going to try and make it up somewhere else. That necessarily say that that was their business model, but that's typically what you see. That's typically why you don't go with those imbalance bids. We've had that problem in the past. There's a former council member who was in here that's got some engineering experience that could speak to that. We've had that problem in the past, where you get imbalance bids, you get a project that's front-loaded, and it causes you problems down the road.
If I could clarify prior to any vote, as Councilmember Perez pointed out, this contract is being awarded as the lowest responsible bidder, and the only reason why we are recommending the second person is because we didn't feel as though the bid was qualified, a qualified bid, because of the problems with the references that didn't appear to be in size and scope. And then also, I think there were some bid differences that were highlighted that may be inside your bidding materials. Staff's recommendation and the consultant's recommendation had nothing to do with their familiarity with SCR and the other person, and I understand that's a positive for everybody. But had it not been done as a lowest responsible bidder, we would not be, well, I guess, if it wasn't lowest responsible, then we would have gone for most qualified. And then y'all could have decided if the benefits that you've seen from the other folks outweighed the price on this one. But in this particular case, it is the lowest responsible bidder, and the only reason why we're changing and going to the second person is because staff and the consultants didn't find them to be qualified. If y'all want to override that decision, of course, you could say, no, we're willing to take a chance on this project for these folks, but that's not staff's recommendation to you.
You know, regardless of the contractor, the cost, or the end product, we still, the city has to live with the product that is produced. So, we have to make a determination as to what we want to live with, and that's because we have to, it's been, some of our stuff is going to be 30, 40 years before we get a chance to clean it up. Any further comment from council, or staff got any wrap-up? Hearing none, we do have, I don't hear anything. We do have motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Resolution 2017-101 was approved 5 to 1.
Moving to the business item five, Councilmember Perez, would you do the honor?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number 2017-100, Resolution City Council, Texas Renewing a Unit Price Service Contract for Printing and Mailing City Utility Bill, so moved.
Second.
We do have motion second on the floor, for staff report.
Thanks, sir. This is a renewal for a contract that was bid out. This is for our substantial utility billing. This is not only at printing, but they take data files from us, integrate that into a system, and generate those, and mail them out on a, I think, a weekly basis, if not biweekly. So, it's a substantial effort. They've been working with us on the changeover of our system, and we're still working through the last kinks of that, but do recommend approval so we can keep this service going.
Okay. Any question or comment from council on this item? Hearing none, we do have motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Resolution 2017-100 passed 6 to 0.
Okay, moving in our agenda to item number six, Councilmember Carbone, back to you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action Resolution R 2017-113, Resolution Approving Recommendations of Property Tax Resale Committee, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion second on the floor. Staff report.
So, it's a little bit of a weird one. This is a parcel that was in arrears on their taxes, went on long enough, sufficient size, that county put it up for auction. Apparently, the bid that came back is not sufficient to cover the outstanding taxes, and so the process is that it's required that the taxing entities have to sign off on that. So, basically, we're saying it's okay to sell this for less than what we would get back, because it doesn't cover enough, but this gets property back into some use. Property is kind of, it's off an unplatted road, it's not in front on a public road, but it's been there for some time, and so, really, not a lot of good options.
Okay. Sir, any other question from council on this item?
Yes, Mayor, for staff. So, we've had some experience on this road in the past, as about being an unplatted road. The purchasers, are they going to be able to do anything on that piece of land, other than just use what's already there?
I think the best info we have on the road that's there is that one of the properties along that was platted, and the plat indicated that that was a private road. So, I believe it is established, there's a width of private right-of-way that's established, or was shown established in that plat just down the street from this property. So, I think that's the best information we have on the access to those properties, is that there's a private road.
Because I think I remember it being platted as two 30-foot access easements. And in the past, I know specifically that in the past, we've denied the ability for people to for people to pull permit on that until they can get approved that they have access. So are we saying we're comfortable now that they have access?
The only information I have is from that plat, and it did call it out, I believe it was a 60-foot private road right-of-way. So I'm, I'm not sure if there's existing 30-foot road easements or not, that that plat wiped out, that they're not shown on that plat. But that's the best information we have without going back and abstracting.
If it helps clarify things, if the person proposing to buy it at this price wants to do anything other than use the resident that's currently on that property, I don't believe that, well, they would have to come to compliance with the U D C, and if the U D C requires it to be a private road built to city standards, that would have them do that. Otherwise, I believe they're going to have to keep what's there and not make improvements, at least nothing that's over a certain threshold.
I think that was kind of my point, because we have those existing homes, and it doesn't affect whether we sell it, I think it's independent of that, but since it's come up with heart of conversation, we have those existing homes, we've had people buy some of those empty lots, at least one that I'm aware of, and now possibly two. They're going to put an investment on there, and then they're going to find out through pre-development meeting that they just threw their money away because they can't do anything on the property. So it, it's a separate conversation, which, because it got brought up and it's on that road, and I remember that us having problems specifically on that road, maybe something we want to talk about as far as how do we deal with that as a policy in the future.
And I believe the tax sale documents that are offered by the county when they go through this let people know that they have certain limited rights, so.
Any other question or comment?
Mayor, I guess my comment would be, I mean, buyer beware, do your own due diligence. You know, good luck. It hurts sometimes, it stings, but they're buying a piece of real property, hire, hire a good attorney and have them do the due diligence. I didn't mean to point at you, Derek, I'm sorry. But I mean, it's, it's not our, our position to say just because we approve this that they can do anything with it besides, you know, grow grass.
As long as it's legal.
St. Augustine.
Any other question or comment? We do have a motion second on the floor, Mr. Chairman?
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Resolution 2017 dash 113 is approved six to zero.
Moving in our agenda to item number seven, Councilmember Reed, would you present this for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R 2017 dash 86, a resolution authorizing the city manager or his designee to enter into a development agreement with First Capital Partners LLC, so moved. Second.
We have a motion of second on the floor, we're in discussion, staff report.
Thanks, sir. We do have a first reading of a planned development for the Massey Oaks project. You will see the second reading along with the annexations in June, but wanted to get this development agreement out of the way, which has been discussed with the developer applicant. This provides the provisions of who's doing what and when and phasing and so forth for the improvements, offsites and so forth, to make the development happen. So I just wanted to present this, and, and like I said, you'll see the actual second reading for consideration, annexation next month.
Council, council have any question or comment on this item?
I just had a statement. I'd say that I'd, I'd hold true to what we were doing with the, with the P D. It'll be a yes, but we need to get some of those questions, the other questions that were lingering from the last one before you'll get a yes on the second reading.
Okay. Any other question or comment?
I, I should have mentioned that this doesn't bind, as I understand, any way for the second reading and all that, but presume that it'll all move forward, so.
I understand. We have motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Abstain.
Councilmember Little?
Absent from the chamber.
Absent from the chamber.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Resolution 2017 dash 86 was approved four to two with Councilmember Ordno abstaining and Councilmember Little absent from the chambers.
Okay, by our agreement from the staff, let me reconvene the citizen-to-be-heard portion of our agenda, and ask Mr. Kirsch if he, he has the privilege of the podium. You have the privilege of the podium, we, we're reconvening you, so thank you for being here tonight. Remember, when you get up, give us your name and address and your address, name and your address.
Name is Lot G C Kerschnock, nickname Max, 3420 Shady Crest.
Oh, good, thank you, thank you.
Resident neighbor.
You move a little closer to the microphone, we could probably all hear you.
Neighbor at 3422 issued a C T W against me, and I took a walk on my property and saw my pole chainsaw in her backyard. Called the police, police came, I picked it up. She said she had no idea where it came from. I'd been missing it close to six months, and said, well, she had two stories, she didn't know where it came from, and later on said it was hers or theirs, meaning her and her employees. There's some work going on in the barn that I'm not sure what's going on, whether or not she needs a permit for it, and whether there's a commode there, and where the effluent will go, if there is one. Later on that day, I noticed that there was a bucket filled with concrete and a pipe in it weighing over 100 pounds on the easement by the street near the other neighbor's driveway at 3424. That bucket is still there. There had been two previous buckets there, one per week apparently, and I took the other two and kind of wheeled them to my property. As I was wheeling the second one, I got tired and winded and left it at, partially on where her driveway meets the pavement with plenty of her room to get in. While the police were, oh, the police came, said that it'd be better for me to remove it. I said, I will. After we finished the deal with the chainsaw, she didn't answer the door, so I suggested they go across the street to get her cell phone number from another neighbor, which they did, and they called her, and she came out of the house. She was upset, angry, and started screaming and yelling and came across, well, she, let's see, there, there were two visits, two or three visits by police. She called them for one, oh, yes, she called them maybe before I saw the chainsaw and called them about the chainsaw. So there were two sets of policemen on two different calls, and later there was a third or fourth set. She pulled in and got out of her car screaming and came onto my property. I leaned over to one policeman, said, let her get her anger out, don't try and yell at her and scream at her back to stop, that once the anger gets out, maybe the wine will flow from the park, I mean, from the bottle. She screamed and said she wanted me arrested for that concrete bucket, and police refused, and, and then got my report, and she left and went to City Hall. And I don't know what happened at City Hall, but the police, police came back and arrested me. That was Monday morning, and I spent the night in Pearland City Jail and got home from Brazoria County this morning. And I think she should be arrested for the screaming and yelling and coming on to my part of the city easement further than the bucket was at the edge of her driveway. I think all citizens should be treated fairly, and the police are not. I had a request for a garage sale. You all may remember that I tried to hold a garage slash estate sale after 50 years of accumulation of, to some people junk, to others treasures. And to get rid of it, I said I'll hold the garage sale. That was a year ago. That garage sale never took place, despite the fact that pressure was put, I think, by elements above the employees to declare I did hold the garage sale. And then, when I tried to hold three days at the end of second quarter and three days at the start of third quarter, I was told that the ordinance was interpreted to mean I couldn't do it and was forbidden, plus I was told I had already had a garage sale, which I hadn't. Now, there's hanky panky going on at City Hall, and if you want to end my time here, you will be asked questions as to what you know about the hanky panky, and it may be much worse than laughable hanky panky. And you may seriously consider pulling out of the race and saving a taxpayer some money. And questions will be asked of you at campaign meetings where candidates will be asked to come if you want to talk to me about it personally further, I'd be happy to.
Good. I appreciate those comments, thank you very much. Moving in our agenda to item number seven, council, mayor council issues for future city council agendas. Are there any items that you'd like to have placed on future agendas at this point? Hearing none, let me move then to item number eight on our agenda, which let me adjourn this city council meeting at eight o'clock.